It's nine o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Kathy is out today and our commissioner today is supposed to be?
Mark Sanino.
Okay. He might be running a little late, we'll see. All right, approval of the November thirteen minutes. Did everyone get a chance to review those? Did anybody find any errors for correction? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approval of today's agenda. For the audience out there, you can get an agenda on the back bookshelf. If you don't have one, that way you can follow along with what we're going through today. If there's no issues with the agenda, entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
I so move.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Today's consent agenda. Go ahead PJ.
Good morning. PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department, Consent Agenda. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken in all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by a planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item three, Conditional Use Permit Review 1526 for Richard Burton to review an existing accessory structure which is a garage and a new accessory structure which is a pole barn prior to a principal structure on a subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1526 with seven conditions. Item four, Conditional Use Permit Review 1640 for John and Polly Preston to review a caretaker's residence on a subject property in the general agriculture district. Staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit 1640 as it is no longer needed. Item five, Conditional Use Permit Review 1727 for Beverly Sears to review an existing twelve-by-twelve structure to be used as a single-family residence in the suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1727 with five conditions. Item six, Conditional Use Permit Review 1730 for Daniel Johnson, Highmark Properties LLC, to review a multifamily residence to be used as a vacation home rental in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of Conditional Use Permit 1730 to the January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, Planning Commission meeting in order for the applicant to obtain legal access to the subject property from the United States Forest Service. Item seven, Conditional Use Permit Review 1733 for by two minutes paving Terry Sewell as the agent to review a temporary hot mix asphalt batch plant, stockpile site, and contractor's storage area for contract work in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1733 with eleven conditions. Item eight, Conditional Use Permit Review 1809 for Scott and Christina Grierson to review a recreational vehicle to be used as temporary living quarters on the subject property which is Lot Six while building a single-family residence on Lot Five in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1809 with eleven conditions. Item nine, Major Plan Unit Development Amendment 1709 for Big Horn Canyon Ministries Incorporated. Perry Lewis is the agent to review the existing plan unit development to allow a church slash place of worship in accordance with Section 213 of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Major Plan Unit Development Amendment Review 1709 with twenty-two conditions. Item ten, Construction Permit Review 1716 for Site Work Specialists Incorporated to review the development of residential lot including grading, utility installation, and road construction on the subject property. Staff recommends to end construction permit 1716 with the applicant's concurrence. Item eleven, Conditional Use Permit 1841 for Andrew Foley to allow a single-wide mobile home to be used as a single-family residence on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit 1841 with nine conditions. Item twelve, Conditional Use Permit 1842 for Keith and Sandra Lochner to allow for the home occupation, to allow for a home occupation in the suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit 1842 with fourteen conditions.
Any items that staff would like to pull?
No, sir.
All right. Any members like to have any items pulled for review?
I would like number eleven.
Number eleven. Any other items? Any audience members on the items that were just read on the consent agenda, if you'd like any of those heard separately, please come forward and let us know which number you'd like to have heard separately, or we're going to vote on them in one fail swoop. All right, seeing none, I'd only use our current consent agenda items, items number three through ten, and number twelve. If that's correct, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Takes us to item number eleven.
Item eleven is Conditional Use Permit 1841 for a single-wide mobile home to be used as a single-family residence in a general agriculture district. The applicant is Andrew Foley. Size of the property is thirty-one point two-two acres.
My concern was page five of six, Roman numeral number seven, sub- paragraph B. You indicate the use of the single-wide mobile home should not affect the surrounding properties. But yet then I was concerned about the letter that was written by the neighbor indicating that he in fact felt the placement of it would decrease the value of his home. So I was just wondering how you...
Well, we can't determine, and we never received proof from the complainants about property values unfortunately.
Okay.
There is a single-wide mobile home between the subject property and the complainant as well.
Oh, there is?
Yep, and it seems, and the placement of the single-wide seems consistent with what's out there.
Okay.
That was the only letter of concern that we received.
Okay, but there are other single-wide mobile homes out there?
There are, they're sparse, but they're out there.
Oh, all right, all right.
Any further questions?
The applicant is here if you'd like to speak with him.
Well, I was wondering if the person who wrote the letter were here.
I don't know.
Oh.
Is either Philip or Lori here? All right. Any further questions for staff? Any audience members like to speak on behalf of this item? All right, seeing none, current recommendation is for staff to recommend approval of Conditional Use 1841 with the following nine conditions. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Mark, motion for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Rich. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That takes us to item number thirteen.
Thank you.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Item thirteen is a construction permit request to excavate and level a hillside for future residents. As the property exists today, it's a suburban residential district. It consists of point-six acres, and the total area of disturbance is approximately eleven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirteen square feet, and it is vacant of any structures. Staff did route this through their interdepartmental review, and there were some items of concern that came up from the highway department concerning the excavation and how it's being used as far as the stability of the hillside. The recommendation was that either they get some engineered plans to show that that hillside could be stabilized either by a wall or by grading it out. Staff did do several site visits. There is actually an active stop-work order on the property. Staff did do a site visit on November nineteenth again, and it looked like the stockpiles were being removed still, but no erosion control measures had been implemented to date. Staff did meet with the property owner prior to the last Planning Commission meeting, and he indicated that he would get the site stabilized for the winter in order to address some of the concerns from the highway department engineer and the city of Rapid City. But staff is recommending approval of construction permit CP eighteen-twelve with twelve conditions.
So Brittany, just out of curiosity, currently there's a stop-work order on it until all this goes through depending on what happens?
Yes, until it gets stabilized also.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understood all that.
Okay.
Are there any questions for staff on this item?
I have one.
Go ahead Jim.
What was the confusion about square feet versus cubic feet? I mean, the gentleman, according to testimony, indicated that there was some confusion about what the regulations were in his mind.
Right, and when we calculated it out, and I think the calculation was in there, it was ten thousand square feet. I know he is digging down quite a bit. There was concern about the stability of the hillside and that property with the amount of excavation that was coming out. If you look, there's structures on the hillside above him, and I know that that was a concern from before.
Why was he confused about that? I mean...
I think it had to do with, because on our application, it has length, width, and depth on our application. If you do look at cubic feet, that would kick you into actually a mining permit.
Right.
And actually, right now...
Twenty by twenty, you go four hundred feet down maybe or something, but that's not the intent, I know.
But if you excavate out more than a hundred cubic yards by our ordinance, and it's not for personal use, which the applicant has indicated to us that he is actually selling the material, then that would put him into a mining permit request, which would not be allowed in a suburban residential district.
Right, okay.
I don't know if the planning commission received the apology from the applicant. As to the confusion, I know the board did, but the applicant is also here today. He admitted that he was wrong about that.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I was concerned that maybe there was some confusion about the regulations, that it wasn't spelled out clearly in our ordinances that what construction permit requirements were, but I didn't think that was the case, but I wanted to make sure that the applicant wasn't confused for that reason, but...
Right, when you, like I said, our application does have the depth of it also.
Okay, and that may be where he got, okay.
All right, any further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead Rich.
Are there any concerns with the way that the site is excavated now, that there's some sort of imminent, you know, sloughing or that can happen of the uphill slope such that it would affect the adjacent property? Or is, I mean, he'll get engineered plans to you within thirty days, and then they'll get reviewed, and then he'll get authorized, I'm assuming authorization to proceed based on those plans and the review by staff to stabilize the site?
Yes, and that was, it looks like it's going to be reviewed again on December third for progress. He had indicated to us when we met in the hall like prior to the last Planning Commission meeting that he was going to contact an engineer to look at the site.
Okay.
Is that regarding the retaining wall at all, or the...
Well, all of it, just the way that the site is being excavated out and the retaining walls, I believe that the highway department had concern about is the one up there on the left.
And that's the one that's got the structures?
That it's not stable?
What, those are actually landscape rocks, and typically they're not supposed to be over two to three feet, I think is what our drainage engineer had indicated.
The pole that's in the drawing there, or the picture there, is that a power pole?
Yes.
And so have the utilities reviewed that as well as far as the excavation around the pole?
I don't know if it was routed to them, but we certainly can route it to them to see if they have any concerns. It could be West River Electric.
It might be something that they should just take a quick peek at. It doesn't look like it's that deep around it, but typically they get nervous when you start digging around, those sorts of things. My general concern is if there's any imminent, you know, while we're going through the process, if you will, is there something else that needs to be done to stabilize something such that something doesn't affect an adjacent property owner in the meantime? That's my concern here. Otherwise, it's excavation site.
Okay. And we'll work with it, continue to work with the applicant. Like I said, it'll be on the agenda again on December third.
Any further questions for staff? Any members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Come on forward, sir, and state your name and...
This one?
Either one.
Okay. My name is Bradley Nivell, I'm the guy who is applying for the permit. And concerning the telephone pole, I have had Lance from West River Electric down there and asked him about, to make sure that I wasn't getting too close to it. The retaining wall is what the engineer asked for. I stopped there this morning and measured the blocks. The blocks are three and three-quarters inches tall, and there's eight rows there you can see in the picture. So it's thirty inches tall. And that was the maximum he thought that wall should be, was thirty inches. I went out and talked to them at the highway department and asked about that, and he said that they received a picture from the planning department about the wall, and they were supposed to comment on it. And so I talked to him about that, and he said that, he says, "Well, if it's thirty inches, then it's okay," but he thought there should have been a drain tile put in behind there. And I said, "I didn't think on that sort of a wall that a drain tile was necessary. There is aggregate behind the wall like he asked for, and it is thirty inches tall." So it's, that wall is, and I asked him why that was, pictures of that were being taken on the adjacent property, because it doesn't really have anything to do with the permit, and he couldn't give me an answer for that, why that was. So, but, and being where I am, there aren't any building codes specifically, because I've had inspections with the private inspector done on the building that I built, so that financing could be got against that, but I didn't have him inspect any of the retaining walls because there aren't any building codes in that area for any of that kind of stuff. So, and as far as the stabilization, I have started putting out some mats, straw mats, on the ground. The pile has been removed, and what was left of it was put in the basement that was dug out. It was just moved back into the hole until I can get the engineer's information, I guess, on what to do with the hillside. I don't believe there's any reason to be worried about the hillside because it's, that clay, once it's, once it's there, it doesn't seem like, it erodes a little bit, but it doesn't move anywhere as far as sloughing down the hill. But I don't have any problems with any of the stipulations on the, on this. I was a little concerned about why they were taking pictures of the adjoining retaining walls, because that property's already been inspected and everything's done, has been for a while. So I wasn't sure why that, but I did go and talk to Bill Alt Highway Department, and I talked to Mark. The approach was a misunderstanding by me that I could put it in, but if the thing didn't go through the plating, I'd have to take it back out. And he said he didn't remember having that discussion, but he didn't want me to do any more work there until it had been, gone through the city, the replating had been approved. So that's where I'm at now, is just, I'm just going to stop work there until the city's done with the replating and then continue forward, and hopefully by then I'll have the information from the engineer.
The city would be replating?
Yeah, because it's within the one mile, the city has to...
One mile, city.
I see.
Three miles, the city has to approve it.
I see.
Well, the problem is not with the city, it's with the engineer that's doing it. He's not submitting the paperwork. We had a conference call last week, or before, after the last meeting here, we had a conference call at the city office with the engineer to tell him what had to be submitted, that they had to have, hopefully before the end of the year, so they didn't have to go back in, because then taxes and things like that have to be paid on the property. So hopefully they'll get it done. It's been eighteen months to do something that should have taken four. So I don't, I'm pretty much at a loss of what to do with the property. That's why I started working, was trying to get something done while I'm waiting in them, and then... My mistake with the square footage was the amount of right-of-way that was on my property. There's forty feet of right-of-way on that side of the blacktop, and I wasn't figuring that in. I was figuring in the square footage on my property that I was digging up. So that, for me, was the mistake in the square footage. So, and like I say, the only thing I have a problem with in the, I think it's twelve items in the back, is the inspecting the property every seven days. So right now, I can't, I don't plan on being here all winter long, so I can't agree to doing that at this time, because I have several trips planned for the winter that are going to be gone longer than that. So I guess what I would like to know is if there's anything I can do that doesn't have to be inspected every seven days to approve it. If not, then I'll have to wait until later to get it approved, because I won't be around for that. On different occasions, I won't be here for that amount of time, so... But other than the rest of them, I don't have a problem with any of the rest of them, and I'm trying to contact, I went through and found some different engineers to look at it for that hillside, so...
Do you understand why they want you to come back every seven days to look at it after a storm or anything of that nature?
What's that?
Do you understand why the, the planning department wants you to come back and...
Well, yeah, I can understand why they need that done, but my plan is just to put gravel over what's supposed to be driveway and put those mats on the downhill part there where the, I've done all the right-of-way already, I've got the mats on there now, and move that stockpile off of the, it's like I say, it's in the hole or it's gone. And that way, that whole front of that could be cleaned up. But I don't mind, I mean, while I'm there working, I can understand why I got to be there, but throughout the winter, I don't have the money to try to pour concrete in the wintertime when it's cold, so I'm not going to be able to do any of that kind of work during the winter anyway. So I'm either just going to have to stop working on it until the weather gets nicer, or I'm going to have to have some kind of leniency on the seven days, because like I say, I've got several trips planned that I'm not going to be here every seven days.
Can't someone else look at it? I mean...
Well, I could have somebody else go down there and do it, but I wouldn't be able to do anything too much about it until I get back.
Sure.
I understand that the, that all the silt and stuff has to be cleaned up if any of it gets in the ditch and that. I've talked to, I believe it's Mark out of the highway department, and he said because that ditch is so flat, he doesn't want any sediment getting in there, because then it's going to impede that water getting out of there, because of the distance they had to go with that ditch to get the water out of there.
Right.
So, I don't, like I say, I don't have a problem with that other than the fact that I won't be here enough to do that every seven days, but if somebody else can check it for me, that would be, I'm sure I can have that done, because I have a lot of family members live on that street, so it wouldn't be a problem to have somebody drive by there and look at it. I don't believe during the winter, there's going to be a whole lot of issues with it. But it would be nice to be able to get that basement dug out before it got nice, so as soon as it got nice, I could start working, but that's just going to be up to you guys, how that works. If I have to wait, I'll just wait.
Any questions for Mr. Bradley?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mark.
As long as that's acceptable by PJ, that he has somebody else inspect it while he's gone, I don't see a problem with that. Where Brittany?
Hi Brittany, again. Just a kind of a history on that, that is located in our regulated MS four, so we do have an NPDS permit in this area. So that's kind of the reason that that is in there. And also, there's a history of that ditch getting sedimented in, because we've had numerous complaints on that, in that area back in two thousand thirteen when there was other construction on there, and the highway department had to go in and regrade that ditch and everything, so that's kind of the reason for it. And to get that site stabilized, so that doesn't happen through the winter, because even the snow melt can cause that, any kind of, I mean, we have wind, all kinds of things that could, you know, impact the BMPs that are implemented, that's the necessity for the inspections. So I don't, I think as long as they're being inspected, that's fine.
Long, it doesn't matter whether it's the owner or somebody who knows?
No, and typically, just in our permit requirements, we typically put the owner, because they are ultimately responsible for their property.
Sure, okay.
So if he is responsible, if you're the one that's responsible, you have a family member do it for you, report back to you, let you know what's going on, so that way you know the first moment you get in town, you get it fixed, or you get somebody to get it fixed if you're not going to be in town soon enough.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
That's fine.
I guess that's, like I say, that's one of the only things I had any problems with, getting an engineer to look at that hillside. I don't think that will be expensive, but I don't know what that is going to cost to have somebody check that out.
Right. Any further questions?
No, I move for approval.
Let me just see if there, anybody else would like to speak on this item? All right. Mark moves for approval.
I'll second.
Seconded by Sandy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That takes us to item number fourteen.
Good morning, Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item fourteen is Minor Plant eighteen thirty-eight and Subdivision Regulations Variance eighteen oh nine. This is a request to create Lot One and Two of Borglum Subdivision and to waive plating requirements. The applicant is Borglum Historical Center, Dwayne Pankatz, and the agent is Ken Nash. This has been before you before. This property is located out in Rockerville. Currently is twenty-one acres, own general egg, and it's currently vacant of any structures, just contains six billboards that are, have been on the property for quite some times, they're quite some time, their size, distance apart, and setbacks are considered legal nonconforming. What they're proposing to do with this lot is they're proposing to create Lot One of Borglum Subdivision, which would be nineteen point four-one-nine acres, and would be accessed off of Pine Haven Road, which is within the Pine Haven Road District. And then Lot Two of Borglum Subdivision would be one point nine-five-three acres and would contain all of those six existing billboards. Access to that would be off of the section nine right-of-way, and they are also plating a sixty-six-foot wide access and utility easement for that property as well. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process, nothing of significant concern came back. The layout plot for this was approved by the Board of Commissioners on October sixteenth of this year with nine conditions. In addition, they are requesting to waive two subdivision regulations variances. They're requesting to waive percolation tests and soil profile hole information, which has to be submitted to the planning department before a building permit for a residence or a septic system or anything like that can be submitted. And then they're also requesting to waive engineered road construction plans and road improvements. Pine Haven Road is an already existing road and within a road district, and the applicant has also received approval of road construction within a section line right-of-way to construct access into proposed Lot One there. The only change that they did from the layout plot till now was pretty minor originally. They were requesting to just create the one-platted lot for the billboards and leave the remaining balance unplatted. Now they're just plating both lots into Lot One and Lot Two rather than Lot One in the unplatted balance. So I would like to do the recommendations separately if I could, Mr. Chair. The recommendation for subdivision regulations variance eighteen oh nine, staff does recommend approval to waive those two requirements that they're requesting.
Any questions for staff? Any members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? If not, recommendation is to approve SV eighteen oh nine with to waive the following recommendations. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
And the second recommendation is for Minor Plot eighteen thirty-eight, and staff recommends approval with ten conditions.
I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Takes us to item number fifteen.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
And this is regarding billboards in general. When they're legal and nonconforming, it would be my understanding that they can stay that way until they come down, or the sign, I mean, can it be changed as long as the perimeter of the sign remains the same?
So we don't regulate content. We regulate size, location, and whether it's lit. So it can say whatever it wants.
I see.
The legal nonconforming status is lost. They're allowed to do routine maintenance on it. But if they do over fifty percent of its value, so if they do fifty-one, fifty-point-one percent improvement value over what the actual value of the structure is, they lose the legal nonconforming status.
Okay.
Okay? So if, if it's, if the repairs are more than fifty percent of its value, basically is the best way to say it.
Sure, but it doesn't...
And if they make it bigger, if they increase the nonconformity, or they light it when it's not lit, then it automatically goes back and has to be brought into compliance.
Okay, but if it, if it ceases to advertise anything for more than a year, is it still a legal nonconforming? In other words, let's say nobody rents it for a year, but the structure itself is still there, and a year and a day later, somebody comes, that timeframe doesn't apply to billboards?
So there's billboards and there's signs, and some are under conditional use permits, and some are only under sign permits. The conditional use permits, the use for which it is approved, if it isn't established within two years of approval, it's automatically expired, that's established, so that would be putting up the sign. If after it's established, it ceases to be used, you know, for its approved use for more than a year...
Sure.
Then it expires, but again, it depends on how it was put there.
Okay, thank you.
But if it was legal nonconforming, it doesn't, neither of those would apply.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, item number fifteen.
Item fifteen, County Board Report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, Planning Commission meeting.
Item sixteen, any members of the public like to speak? Have any issues? I see none. Item seventeen, items from the staff.
Only two items.
Only, they stay in only two?
I could add more, but we'll just do two. Uh, item A, the holiday luncheon, as you all got in, an invite for the December third luncheon. It will be held after the meeting that day. How's the agenda look that day?
It's, might be an hour or more.
Okay, so it might be a brunch. So if you haven't, uh, responded to it, Jerry or Christina, please do so.
Okay.
Item B, uh, Board of Commissioners Special Meeting for Kroll Ready Mix. Uh, there will be a meeting on January sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, and if an additional meeting is needed, it will be on the, on January seventeenth, two thousand nineteen.
Alright, so ours is the eighth and ninth, and theirs is the following week, is that right?
Yours is the eighth and maybe the ninth.
Maybe the ninth, yep. And theirs is the following week?
The sixteenth and maybe the seventeenth.
But theirs isn't gonna start at three. If people want to protest...
I believe they're starting at nine.
It is. Normal, normal hour, unlike ours, unlike the planning commission.
Okay.
Alright. Anything else?
No, sir.
Alright. Eighteen, items from the membership. Anybody have anything?
Mr. Chair, I will, I will be gone next Monday.
You'll be gone next Monday. Fair enough.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've been called to jury duty on Thursday, so I don't know if that means, I don't know what that means, so... Maybe I'll be here Monday, maybe I won't.
Okay, well, fair enough. Just let us know if you get picked and if you...
I will.
Anybody else have anything else? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.